Knowledge and wisdom, your heavenly Father, make the best decision for our county, your heavenly Father. Thank you for all that you do for us, but most of all, thank you for the plan of salvation. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have to roll call. Everyone push your press button. Yes.
Give me one just in case.
Okay, we have to roll call. We need to elect the chairperson for the county commission. The floor is now open. The nomination of the chairperson has to-
Make a motion to mayor Baird.
I'll second that motion.
Is there anyone on the table?
Ma'am. I move to elect the mayor by acclamation.
Make the motion, the nomination ceased. The nomination being made, they have to make it. All in favor, vote yes. Press your button and a close vote now.
Is this your fifth district?
Start up the vote yet? You can confirm.
Still good?
Make the tax law. New chairman, yes. We can make-
Well, you sure look better if you're a blue one.
The floor is now open for chairman pro tem. Chairman nominate Johnny Bruce as our pastor.
We got a motion.
I'll second it.
And motion by, or executed by Bobby White to nominate Johnny Bruce chairman pro tem. Any other nominations? Do I hear a motion that the nomination ceased and that Johnny be elected by acclamation?
So would.
J.L. Davis makes the motion. Terry Singley seconds the motion. We're ready to vote. All those in favor of Johnny Bruce being chairman pro tem, vote yes, then pressure confirmed button. Those opposed, vote no. Anyone wish to change your vote? Show us the vote, ma'am. Twelve, eleven, yes. One abstention by Johnny Bruce and David Atkins, Wendell Bailey, and Bob Walden are absent. Johnny Bruce is elected chairman pro tem. Now I will entertain a motion to approve the county commission minutes of the August 19th meeting.
Make a motion to approve the minutes.
Motion by Rusty Oryk.
Second.
Segmented by Terry Singley. Any discussion, any changes? Ready to vote. All those in favor of approval of the minutes, vote yes, then pressure confirmed button. Those opposed, vote no. Anyone wish to change your vote? Show us the vote. Twelve, yes. Wendell Bailey, David Atkins, and Bob Walden absent. Minutes are approved.
How is Wendell, by the way? Why not?
He's done, man.
I don't know. I haven't heard.
Talk to him, say, he's doing good.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve the notary renewals, and they are Barbara C. Aldridge, Sharon G. Ayers, Vicki Cannon, Linda Douglas, Judy F. Freeman, Rebecca Wasson, Beverly G. Wilson, Curtis Clay Lane, and James M. Oryk.
Motion to approve the renewals.
Got a motion by Terry Singley, segmented by Sue Nance, to approve the notary renewals. Any questions, any discussion? Ready to vote. All those in favor of approval of the notary renewals, vote yes, then pressure confirmed button. Those opposed, vote no. Anyone wish to change your vote? Show us the vote. Twelve, yes. David Atkins, Wendell Bailey, and Bob Walden absent. Call the vote, ma'am.
Ayers, yes. Sayre, yes. Bruce, yes. Davis, yes. Evans, yes. Hall, yes. Hatmaker, yes. Nance, yes. Oryk, yes. Rutherford, yes. Singley, yes. And White, yes.
Okay, notary renewals are approved. We have one new applicant, that's Brenda L. Asher. Brenda L. Asher, Tanya Lee Spencer, and Jennifer Ann Hicks.
Motion approved.
Got a motion by Rusty Oryk.
Second.
Segmented by Terry Singley. Any discussion, any question? All those in favor, vote yes, then pressure confirmed button. Those opposed, vote no. Anyone wish to change your vote? Show us the vote. We have twelve, yes. David Atkins, Wendell Bailey, and Bob Walden are absent. Give us the vote.
Ayers, yes. Sayre, yes. Bruce, yes. Davis, yes. Evans, yes. Hall, yes. Hatmaker, yes. Nance, yes. Oryk, yes. Rutherford, yes. Singley, yes. And White, yes.
Notary applicants are approved. Next, I'll entertain a motion to approve the committee reports and minutes to include the budget finance minutes of September the 9th.
Motion to approve the reports and minutes, Mr. Chair.
Got a motion by Commissioner Oryk.
Second, Mr. Chair.
Segmented by Terry Singley. Any discussion or questions? Okay, all those in favor, vote yes, then pressure confirmed button. Those opposed, vote no. Anyone wish to change your vote? Show us the vote, ma'am. Twelve, yes. Three absent. David Atkins, Wendell Bailey, and Bob Walden. Committee reports and minutes are approved. Next, I will entertain a motion to approve our budget amendments and funding resolutions.
Mr. Chair, make a motion to approve 9, 1 through 9, 10.
Motion-
Second, Mr. Chair.
Terry Singley seconds the motion. Any questions, any discussion? Tom Hatmaker.
The budget amendment that I was asking about on the $37,000 for the playground equipment?
Yes.
Do we know exactly where that's going?
Jeff?
It's resolution number 92. The pre-K equipment. We have is the playground equipment for the Ballin Elementary preschool, computers at Jack's Pearl, Delco, the Ballin and Valley View preschools, and the fence for Delco Elementary.
Any other questions?
The fence is at Delco Elementary?
Fence is at Delco Elementary, that's correct.
Do you know where that'd be located at?
I don't. It just simply says it'd be a fence along with planned concrete walkway and can.
You know where it's going?
Probably be out back out there.
I seen the school board chairman here. Director?
Yeah, right here.
There you are. Do you know where it's going?
I'm sorry to say that I do not.
It ain't gonna end up-
I don't.
It ain't gonna end up around the tee ball field over there, is it?
I'm sorry to say that I did not inform them.
Who has it?
Oh, I don't. I don't have no idea what-
If it's a preschool, it's a preschool playground.
So it has to end up at the preschool area.
Yes.
That'd be in the back of the school.
Okay. It's not the first time we've heard that.
Mr. Walden, what we're getting ready to do is vote on the budget amendments, 9, 1 through 9, 10. Do we need to go back and let him?
That's pretty much the gist.
Cancel the vote. And let Bob sign in. Okay, Bob, go ahead and sign in. And he's joined the discussion. Now we can vote.
Okay, we're ready to vote on budget amendments 9, 1 through 9, 10. All those in favor, vote yes, then pressure confirmed button. Those opposed, vote no. Anyone wish to change your vote? Yes. Yes.
I'll state as well, 1 through 4.
Steve Rutherford, Terry Singley, Sue Nance, Johnny Bruce, Alvin Evans, Bob Walden. All state a conflict, but are voting their conscience. Show us the vote, ma'am. Got 11, yes. Tom Hatmaker voting no. Bob Walden abstaining. David Atkins and Wendell Bailey are absent. Amendment's are approved. Okay, moving on. I'll entertain a motion to approve the report, county officials and other departments and other reports. Motion by Johnny Bruce, segmented by Sue Nance. Any questions, any discussion? All those in favor of approval of the reports, vote yes, then pressure confirmed button. Those opposed, vote no. Anyone wish to change your vote? Show us the vote. Thirteen, yes. Wendell Bailey and David Atkins are absent. Under other matters, we have a couple of things that were added after our workshop. We'll need a motion to suspend the rules for the consideration of a resolution to apply for a recycling hub and spoke grant. It's a 100% grant, no local match, to replace the conveyor system where the recyclable are, I guess, divided out at the toe string center.
Make a motion to suspend the rules, Mr. Chair.
Motion by Oryk, segmented by Johnny Bruce, to suspend the rules. Any questions, any discussion? Okay, all those in favor of suspending the rules, vote yes, then pressure confirmed button. Those opposed, vote no. Anyone wish to change your vote? Show us the vote. Thirteen, yes. Wendell Bailey and David Atkins are absent. Rules are suspended. Now entertain a motion to approve the resolution to apply for the 100% grant to replace the conveyor system.
Make a motion that we approve the resolution applying for the grant. Second, thank you.
Motion by Oryk, segmented by Tom Hatmaker. Any discussion, any question? All those in favor, vote yes, then pressure confirmed button. Those opposed, vote no. Anyone wish to change your vote? Show us the vote, ma'am. Thirteen, yes. Wendell Bailey and David Atkins are absent. Next, we have a request from Brandon Parton to surplus a Xerox work center 24 copier. Need a motion to suspend the rules.
So would, Mr. Chair. Second, Mr. Chair.
Got a motion by Oryk, segmented by Terry Singley, to suspend the rules. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor of suspending the rules, vote yes, then pressure confirmed button. Those opposed, vote no. Anyone wish to change your vote? Show us the vote, ma'am. Thirteen, yes. Wendell Bailey and David Atkins are absent. The rules are suspended.
Motion to declare surplus.
Entertain a motion. Motion by Terry Singley to declare the Xerox work center 24 copier surplus.
Mr. Chair, if you could include that motion, it's going to use it for trade-in allowance for a purchase of a new machine.
I'll do that.
Trade-in allowance for the purchase of a new machine.
Second.
Segmented by Steve Rutherford. Any questions, any discussion? Sue?
Does he, when he leases, like, the house is still?
No, ma'am. It's cheaper not to lease.
Big market.
Yeah, we're trying to get away from leasing as much as possible, Sue, so we don't pay any interest.
That wasn't told before, it's cheap to lease to someone else. The Biden office, you really thought on the ones that you bought?
You did. I wouldn't recommend that you lease any time. No advantage whatsoever. You won't spend interest in time you lease. So we're trying desperately to get everybody brought over to not doing that. Veterans Affairs is an example where they came and rented here without knowing to be anywhere else and had to lease.
I wonder, yes, like, a lot of this is off the-.
Four or five years. That's chairman one of those times.
Rusty Oryk?
It'll be coming back to this body again if it's over that kind of amount, right? The FMS. It'll be coming back before this body and through the FMS if it's over $5,000.
Yeah, there had to be a solicitation.
Right. Has he got the money? His budget, Jeff, the money?
Any other question? Ready to vote. All those in favor, vote yes, then pressure confirmed button. Those opposed, vote no. Anyone wish to change your vote? Show us the vote. Thirteen, yes. Wendell Bailey and David Atkins are absent. Motion is approved. Next is the committee assignments. I emailed everyone a copy and I said, I think some more copies were passed out tonight.
Motion to approve committees.
We got a motion to approve the committee assignments, segmented by Bobby White.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
I move to amend the committee list. I would like to be put back on the environmental services and the EMS services, annual service committees.
Have a motion to amend. Here, second.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
EMS was the sixth person on here, wasn't you?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, we have an amendment to add Tom Hatmaker to the emergency management committee and the environmental services committee.
Question?
Yes, sir.
Okay, is this going to take the third district member off, but Tom?
Just adding two at times.
Adding two.
Adding an extra six places. Or is it spelled?
Yes.
Is that automatic? You just ask and you're on?
Well, it takes a motion to second.
Can you get off more? Does that still need questions?
We have a motion and a second to amend. We're voting on the amendment to the motion to approve the committee assignments. Everybody understand these? We're just voting on the amendment.
And it's adding an extra person.
That's adding an extra person to emergency management and environmental services committee.
It's not on the committees.
Okay, all those in favor of the amendment, vote yes, then pressure-
Just one amendment, mayor?
Just one amendment?
Just the one amendment?
Right. Got a motion and a second on the amendment.
On the amendment.
We're voting on the amendment.
You scared me now.
Yeah. Does this include everything else on it, plus the amendment?
This is just the amendment.
I just want to clarify.
Just voting on the amendment. Everybody understands that. Okay, all those in favor of the amendment, vote yes, then pressure confirmed button. Those opposed to the amendment, vote no. Anyone wish to change your vote? Show us the vote. Got 12, yes. Terry Singley voting no, and David Atkins, Wendell Bailey, absent. Amendment is approved. Now, we're voting on the motion to approve the committee assignments as amended.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I have a question. On the FMS, why is it that the fourth district is not-
Nobody likes you, I guess, John. No, it's, uh-
Is that the mayor's district? Is that the mayor's district? We're represented, is that what you're saying?
Well, I know what I'm saying is that I think we had this discussion once before. They said that generally as a rule, the odd one out was the mayor's district. That's all. Before we even started pointing out the people on there.
At least it's on, he's on the committee.
I'm just, I'm just telling you what I was told three years ago.
Tom?
I know somebody had it on the agenda to add a commissioner back to that committee. Would that be where we would take this up, or should we wait till we come to that point in the agenda?
No ways of motion. Well, we have, the motion is to approve the committee assignments as amended.
So this would be where we would take it up, if we were going to amend it or change it?
Mr. Coker?
I would think that if you're getting ready to approve that committee, it's on this list, and if there's a disagreement, whether it's now or any time to take it up either that or to remove it from the list right now, defer to a later time.
I would like to amend that to exclude the FMS committee. Somebody had it on the agenda.
I didn't.
I think Terry's got it on the agenda.
Do you just take that, the FMS, approval of the FMS committee out at this time?
Approve everything but the FMS.
Okay, we have a motion to exclude the FMS from this motion to approve. Is there a second? Understand what we're doing? Bobby White seconds the motion to exclude the FMS committee approval at this time.
Question?
Yes, sir.
We already had a motion on the floor, don't we? We have to have another vote on-
Mr. Coker?
I think mine was an amendment to the motion. I believe the mayor's might have read off wrong.
Yeah, but we suspended the rules to do that. Don't we have to, we have to do the same thing here?
No, we didn't suspend the rules.
What? We did.
Is it, it would seem to me that you're part of the general out of discussion to approve this rule, that if the commission wants to remove one of those, blah, blah, et cetera, if you could do that without suspending the rule.
But, but, Mr. Coker, we have already had a motion and a second to approve. You got to amend it?
You can be amended.
I'm sorry, I mean, you know, without suspending the rule.
I would think it could be amended again without suspending the-
Okay, thanks, sir.
So this is another amendment. We have a motion and a second to amend the committee assignment.
You set the FMS down?
Motion to set aside the FMS committee approval. Motion to set aside the FMS committee approval. That is the amendment that we're getting ready to throw down. Everybody understand the exception there.
I got to add something.
You voted no too soon.
Oh, I did?
Yeah, you need to check back in. Just vote yes and check yourself back in and wait till we go to the vote mode to catch you back in.
Thanks, Jim.
Sorry, because it said voted too soon.
I'm sorry, yeah.
Confused now, I'm sorry.
Another way you could be in a habit with the no. I'm sorry.
Oh, everyone has to know what you have to amend.
I apologize.
Solicitude's been my agenda.
Okay, so everybody's clear? The amendment is to exclude the FMS committee approval at this time. Or at a later date, or later time.
The understanding that it could be voted on separately during this meeting.
Right. Everybody understands that. Okay, you're in favor of excluding the FMS committee at this time and voting on it later in this meeting. Vote yes, then press your confirmed button. Those opposed, vote no. Anyone wish to change your vote? Show us the vote. Okay, we have 11 yes. Rusty Orick and Bob Walden voting no. David Adkins and Wendell Bailey absent. The amendment is approved. Okay. Now we're back on the original motion as amended, which says that we've got six people on Emergency Management, six people on Environmental Services, and we are not voting to approve the FMS committee at this time. Everybody understand that? Right.
Same way it was last year, wasn't it?
Yes. Ready to vote? All those in favor, vote yes, then press your confirmed button. Those opposed, vote no. Anyone wish to change your vote? Show us the vote, ma'am. Thirteen yes. Wendell Bailey and David Adkins are absent. Committee assignments are approved with the exception of the FMS. Now, do we have a motion for the FMS committee?
I make a motion, we approve it as is.
I know we're going right back down that same road, but that's my motion.
I'll second, Mr. Chair.
We have a motion and a second to approve the FMS committee as sent out David Adkins, Terry Singley, Bobby White, Rector Miller, School Board Chairman, Dennis Potter, William Baird, and Donnie Poston. Any questions? Any?
Who made the motion?
Who made the motion? Terry Singley, seconded by the motion.
Why did we just prolong that? Is there something I missed in there? I mean, we could have had this over with.
The only reason I made it was because I know Terry had it on the agenda. I thought he wanted to make a change, but the commission, well, the commissioners back on the board. But if I hadn't...
Okay, any other? Any other questions? Any other discussion? Ready to vote? All those in favor of approval of the FMS committee assignments, vote yes, then press your confirmed button. Those opposed, vote no. Anyone wish to change your vote? Show us the vote, ma'am. Okay, we got... Seven yes, six no. And David Adkins and Wendell Bailey are absent. The motion fails. So, another motion concerning the FMS committee?
Let's deal with it when it comes to me. It's my agenda on that, so let's just move on.
Okay. Next is the Planning Commission appointments. Two new members need to be reappointed are Gary Byrd and Luke Kirk. Entertaining motion to approve those two appointments.
Second to that motion.
Got a motion by Johnny Bruce, segmented by...
I have a question.
Rusty Orick? Yes, sir.
Is it every four years that the commissioners will change mayors? Is it every two?
Every four.
Every four.
Who was the second person, Mr. Chair?
Luke Kirk.
Okay, thanks.
Johnny Bruce made the motion, Rusty Orick seconded. Any more discussion? Okay, all those in favor of approval, vote yes, then press your confirmed button. Those opposed, vote no. Anyone wish to change your vote? Show us the vote. Thirteen yes. Wendell Bailey and David Adkins are absent. Next is the Solid Waste Board appointments. We have three who should have been... Bobby?
There's X. Let me get my act together.
We have five, Jim Robinson, Mike Stanfield, Stan Marlowe, Don Klaver, and Melvin Boshiers, whose terms will expire July 1, 2017. Motion by Bobby White to approve, segmented by Rusty Orick. Any questions? Okay, you're ready to vote? All those in favor of approval, vote yes, then press your confirmed button. Those opposed, vote no. Anyone wish to change your vote? Show us the vote, ma'am. Thirteen yes. Wendell Bailey and David Adkins are absent. Next, we have three more solid waste regional board members. Bobby Heatherly, Donnie Poston, and John Wood, whose term will expire July 1, 2019.
Motion to approve.
Got a motion by Orick, segmented by Charles Baird. Any discussion? Ready to vote? All those in favor, vote yes, then press your confirmed button. Those opposed, vote no. Anyone wish to change your vote? Show us the vote. Thirteen yes. Wendell Bailey and David Adkins absent. Moving on. Marie Ayers.
What a class and company.
I can.
I had on my agenda the Jackson law, which none of us really know or knew or knows anything about. I'll make a motion that the county body approve the Jackson law. If we get a second, we'll discuss it.
I'll second. Some names? Be one.
A motion by Ayers, segmented by Sue Nance, to adopt the Jackson law.
I've done a lot of reading, and a lot in the last four or five hours. And I still don't have clear answers to a whole lot of this. Hope y'all can hear me. The way I've read it, Joe's probably read it more than I have. My concern is, is if we adopt the Jackson law, that takes the permitting application from the state level, puts it to the county level. My question there is, what knowledge do we have to know anything about landfills? Our county attorney's in conflict. We don't have any... You know what I'm saying? It's not just a simple vote the Jackson law in and we're done. All that does is change the permitting process from the state level to the county level. So does anybody have any further, I mean, guidelines? What's the legalities of how we go about? I mean, I've read everything. It's not cut and dry. It's not, it's not really clear.
Sue Nance?
Joe, did you read the parts? I don't remember reading them.
The Jackson law would shift the approval process of permit application from PDE. However, it would be the regulations that would be required to be compliant with it. As I understand it, would still be the state, PDE, the EPA, whatever other agencies would have regulations. That would not be something that this commission would actually do.
So what it basically say then, then it gives us the chance to vote yes at the, at landfill to come in or no. Because we wouldn't regulate it, like you're saying. The state regulates.
That would be my understanding of it. And I don't know if you all have a chance to read some of the information that we sent here today, but you had the letter from Mr. Paul Evan Davis with permit application, administration from PDE. And his letter was copied to Christine Thompson, who's the regional director in Knoxville for PDE. And there was Ravendra Awashi, who is the Knoxville Environmental Field Office of PDE. And then CTA mentioned a Kim Reza, who is the CTA's environmental consultant for Campbell County. There's really not anybody here that I know of that has expertise or any experience with landfills, but these people do. And my recommendation to you is that if you feel like you want more information, then you could invite one or more or some others from these things, come out and answer whatever question you want. They know their experience, they could tell you. But those were the names that we would give them.
But your point, what we're understanding is, if we put it off, all these regulations, everything can be filed, and the Jackson law is not going to be permitted. So, to a extent, if we do put it off, what's the matter?
Well, you know, I would refer you back to the letter that Mr. Paul Evan Davis had written, dated September 5th. What he has said here is, in light of the local articles you provided in your letter, Campbell County Commission does have the authority to review and approve or disapprove the proposed landfill. Pursuant to PCA Title 68, Chapter 211, Part 7, known as the Jackson law, local governments have the option to adopt a provision under this law that grants the local government the responsibility to review and approve or disapprove of a landfill. In this case, Campbell County has not adopted the Jackson law. However, until a permit is issued by the Tennessee Department of Environment and Conservation, PDE, Campbell County could adopt the Jackson law. Once Campbell County has adopted the Jackson law, PDE will stop its review and processing of the permitting activity. It's my understanding that the PDE review process takes a couple of years, a year and a half, two years.
How long is the review process?
I don't know. I have, I do not know that.
And the other part of the question to do is, if it's only adopted and approved the permitting, you can't do it after it's been issued.
The way I read this and understand is, that would be correct. Until a permit is issued by the Tennessee Department of Environment and Conservation, Campbell County could adopt the Jackson law. So, if that was after the permit was issued, then you would not be in a position to do that.
And I assume that's why most of these people aren't here today. I wouldn't want one in my backyard, and I'm sure that's why you're here. So, as you know, it's...
So...
Yes.
I talked to Paul Davis, the fellow that wrote the letter to. I talked to him on Friday. And, George, if I'm misstating something about what you all have done so far, will you get up and tell me? So far, Ketchin Land Company has filed a Part 1 application. There is a Part 1 and a Part 2. Is that correct?
Correct.
So I asked Mr. Davis if Ketchin filed a Part 2... You've only filed a Part 1. You have not filed a Part 2 yet, correct? I asked him, I said, if Ketchin Land Company filed a Part 2 application today, how long would it be before you all would issue a public notice of whether or not you were going to approve the permit? He said, probably two years. So, they've not...
Well, I agree. I can understand that, but then, politics, when things go faster.
Not with state government.
Sometimes they do.
Mr. Chair.
And for us to adopt the law doesn't say that we're stopping or approving it, it just is the right to...
Right. It gives you the, yes.
But if we, if I may?
Hold on just a second. Tom?
I'm having flashbacks to Lighthouse Lodge. Are we going to end up seeing contributions to your campaign like we did down there?
That has nothing to do with it. That has nothing to do with it.
We got two emails from you this week that should have come from our attorney instead of you telling us that we shouldn't do this and...
I just made a recommendation. You can make a recommendation. I can make a recommendation. Anybody can. Bobby White?
If this is approved, that puts the responsibility on us?
No.
Yeah, to either we accept the landfill or we reject the landfill.
That's true, but we don't regulate. We don't regulate.
My question is this. What is the liability of the county? Because if we refuse to let the land company put in the... Can they sue us?
Yes.
Mr. Coker?
And if we adopt, these people out here can sue us.
Or if we do, can a SOCOM group or whatever sue us?
You can get sued on both sides.
Okay, that's actually my question, thank you. Is that right, Mr. Coker? Is that right, Mr. Coker?
The law provides that if, if the commission were to deny the application, that the person with or company would have the right to appeal it to the Chancery Court. And that any, as I understand it, any other affected party could also appeal to the, to the Chancery Court.
Is that in the Jackson law? See, I, I can't get it. I mean, everybody knows that I cannot get these on my computer, but that's a big liability. And, and I, you know, I, I deal with some insurance here. I don't think the county insurance would cover that, would it? I don't believe it would.
The statute sets a set of steps that you're supposed to follow.
I don't have to do it.
And they've outlined what that is in, in the materials we're seeing. You don't create rules of regulation, but you have these steps that you would be required to follow. It's my own belief that you would operate under what would be called the arbitrary and capricious statute, you know, that as long as you don't operate in an arbitrary or capricious manner, then there probably would not be liability. But does that mean that you wouldn't get sued?
Uh-oh. Mr. Coker, I used to be on the beer board sometime back. We refused a permit, a beer permit, and there, we were taken to court, we were sued, and they got a beer permit. I mean, and of course, we, we got to pay a lawyer, you know, but still, that, that's what bothers, that's what worries me, because if we paid the lawyer, they did not sue for money, they sued to get their permit, and, and the court granted them that. But if they sued for money, they would have collected, because the commission was wrong in what they did by, by, you know, not letting them have it. So, I mean, if, if we are sued by the land company for $10 million, and they win, they go to court and they win it, that comes out of Mr. Marlowe's budget.
Can we keep 40 million?
I'm sorry?
Can we keep 40 million?
Does that sound, they're taking-
We still get to keep 40 million.
Beer permit was taken away, but the beer permit not taken away from-
No, 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 we just didn't grant it. No, we didn't let them. They said, "No, we're not going to pass it," and we didn't. But the liability is, is tremendous, I think, because I've, I've been on this side where I've got, you know, where you got sued for it.
Mr. Chairman.
And if you don't have, if you don't have a just cause, you're going to get sued.
Okay, Rusty?
Have you all got the time this week to go through all this about the Jackson law? I mean, I've sat down and spent hours on top of hours of Googling.
I've worked it.
So, you guys are fine, the students, you guys can come in here. Have you looked at what is made due to the coal business that we approved a couple months back? I mean, that's, that's our, I'm looking at the whole nine yards of our livelihood and the coal business, you know, and we're set aside as the 15 individuals has to make the decision to pass this law. And at one time, we passed the law, the County's Powers Act, and we got ripped from one end to the other because we didn't, we supposedly not studied it. Some didn't even look at it. Some didn't. If we got a month, and I'm not trying to postpone it to let them get their permit, but surely the goodness that the man told him it'd be a year or two, we rush into this and pass something that we don't need, may hurt, hurt our coal business being permitted. That's my opinion of it. I'm not against the people out here in the audience to, to keep this out of their back door, I'm not. But this county has always been a coal community, and not to bring radiation in or garbage in, or maybe flies, but I believe we owe it to ourselves to make sure we look at this indefinitely before we pass something that we don't know. And I've looked at it, and I'm still at a loss on some of it. I'm not an attorney. I think we need to call some counties up that's passed it.
I, I talked to another county that passed it, and they ain't seen a liability.
What county was it, Tom?
The others. Yeah, I just had time to call one. I called two, but only talked-
Was it East Tennessee Counties? Was it West Tennessee Counties?
No, it was west.
That passed it? They passed the Jackson Act?
There's, there's several of them that have passed this. Lots of them have passed it.
Okay, Tom, did you have a question?
Yeah, I was just going to call for a question.
Okay. Question's been called for. Is there objection to the question? Everybody realizes what we're-
Mr. Bailey. I have not read the Jackson law, and, and I'm going to abstain simply because I don't know what we're voting for.
Okay.
I mean, I, I'm telling my vote ahead, but I'm not sure we can do that.
We're ready to, we're ready, I'm going to have to catch you off, Bobby.
Okay, thank you.
We're ready to vote. We're voting to adopt the Jackson law. Has to pass by two-thirds majority. All those in favor, vote yes, then press your confirm button. Anyone wish to change your vote? Show us the vote, ma'am. Nine, hold it just a second. Nine yes, one no, four-
Three abstaining, plus you, Mayor, because you're the vote.
Oh, okay. And two absent. It had to pass by a vote of 10 and had 10 votes in the affirmative, so the motion fails. Beverly, I have not found out about your-
I, I talked to Jill Mellicamp, that's one of mine out there, and she went and spoke to her mother, and she's dead now, made like $700, $900 a month, and she should have brought that water out there if it was low income, her mother was a service, and now her mother's dead, and she couldn't get water, and they have to definitely install a paper or water lines out there. It's a deal.
Okay, and the fire hydrant? I have, I've asked, but haven't gotten a word back on it, so when I find out something, I will let you know. Sue, Nance?
No, I guess we just voted on the other one.
Okay, Rusty Ory upgrading the-
You didn't find out anything?
Okay, Steve Rutherford, we passed the-
Thank you, guys, for-
We passed the budget resolution that approved the $6,000 for the Jaws of Life for our rural fire service. Okay, Terry Singley.
I had probably three, three or four different things here.
Hold on just a minute, before we get to it.
J L, you got a question about?
About Steve's, about the Jaws of Life?
Yes.
I kind of thought it was getting played around a little bit, so I done a little more research, and come to find out, that boy's telling Steve the truth about that, they put strong material in there, and, and I connect, got up with Keith Blair, and he said, "That's absolutely right." They had a, theirs over there, they broke the ribbon, it hit the jaw, you know, trying to do it. They're in Campbell County, too. I just hope you all be aware of that.
Okay, Terry?
Okay, the things I brought as far as agenda are all contingent on one thing. I just wanted to bring this to light. I've dealt with this for probably eight, 10 years, is dealing with the split of the school board and the county commission. The only way that would ever transpires is if we come up with a special school district, of course. Right now, I just want it brought to light, and everything else below that is contingent upon that right there. The reason I brought it up, as far as public knowledge, every time there's a tax raise, anything we deal with money, it falls on the back of the commission, which that's what we're elected for. But probably 90-plus percent of the time, and 90-plus percent of the money that we ask for from taxpayers, which we're taxpayers, too, goes to the school system. That's the reason I brought this to light, you know, like it is. The split of the county commission school board, cut the commissioners from 15 down to 10, and to remove the school board chair from FMS, without the number one happening, it ain't going to happen. But it's somewhere we can go in the future, I believe. It's worth pursuing financially, I think. And with that being said, I'll bring it back to the floor to approve the FMS committee as it stands.
Thank you, ma'am.
We got a motion by Terry Singley, seconded by Bobby White, to approve the FMS committee made up of David Atkins, Terry Singley, Bobby White, Richter Miller, Dennis Potter, William Baird, and Donnie Post. Any discussion? Ready to vote. All those in favor, vote yes, then press your confirm button. Anyone wish to change your vote? Show us the vote. Seven yes, six no, two absent, David Atkins and Wendell Bailey. Same outcome. We still don't have the FMS committee approve. In that case, are the same, does it just continue on with its present makeup until?
No.
No.
No, it would not, ma'am. I think your statutory members would, would continue, so it would have a, a majority to continue to do it, but the others would not carry over.
So, there would be the three-
You said three members?
The three statutory members, is all it would be on there?
I'm sorry, yes, the three, yes. That would not be a majority, I'm sorry.
But those three would be, would they make up the FMS committee until the-
Well, they, they couldn't, they, they don't, there's not a forum, not a forum, so no, they couldn't, they couldn't, they couldn't take the action. But they would be on the committee.
Okay. Alvin Evans?
We reappoint the committee. I had a question.
Okay.
Can we vote on them individually?
Yes.
Yes.
But you have to vote for the three. You don't have any choice of those three.
Just three statutory?
Actually, you don't have to vote for them as such, because they're appointed.
Right, right.
I just wrote a statement.
I nominate Tom Hatmaker to the FMS committee.
Got a motion and a second to-
With, with them both?
Do what?
Everyone. With them both?
Yes.
What districts is it?
We have a motion and a second to Tom Hatmaker to the FMS committee.
We have to say who's your vice senior candidate?
Where's this building from scratch?
No, you're just, there's nobody on it right now except for three statutory members, We're ready to vote. Anybody got a question? Everybody understands what we're doing?
Let me ask you, three statutorys, Donnie, you, and Dennis.
Director of Schools, county mayor, and the road superintendent, whoever they may Okay, we're voting to approve Tom Hatmaker to the FMS committee. All those in favor, vote yes, then press your confirm button. Anyone wish to change your vote? Show us the vote. Seven yes, one abstention by J L Davis, five no, Johnny Bruce, Alvin Evans, Bobby White, Terry Singley, and Rusty Ory vote no. That motion fails.
Nominate Bobby White.
We got a motion to nominate Bobby White to the FMS committee.
Second.
Second by Marie. Any discussion? All those in favor of appointing Bobby White to the FMS committee, vote yes, then press your confirm button. Those opposed, vote no. Mr. Baird? Anyone wish to change your vote? Show us the vote. Twelve yes, zero no's, and Bob Walden abstains, Wendell Bailey and David Atkins are absent. Bobby White is on the FMS committee.
I want to nominate John Bruce.
I'll sit, ma'am.
If it's all right, I'll, I'll make Terry Singley with you.
I already nominated John Bruce. I'll sit.
Well, we can, we've-
Do it one by one.
Okay.
We got this far, let's just do it one by one, we'll find out what's left.
Johnny Bruce, Sue Nance nominated Johnny Bruce, Beverly Hall seconded, his nomination to the FMS committee. Any question, any discussion? Okay, all those in favor, vote yes, then press your confirm button. Those opposed, vote no. Anyone wish to change your vote? Show us the vote. Nine yes, three no, Tom Hatmaker, Rusty Ory, and Terry Singley voting no, Bob Walden abstains, Wendell Bailey and David Atkins are absent. Johnny Bruce is appointed to the FMS committee.
Mr. Chairman.
I already had the third one, I liked it.
Let's, let's let J L, he was trying to get the last.
I'll nominate Terry Singley. Second.
Who seconded that? Alvin. J L Davis nominated Terry Singley and Alvin Evans seconded the nomination. Any discussion, any question? All those in favor of Terry Singley serving on the FMS committee, vote yes, then press your confirm button. Those opposed, vote no. Anyone wish to change your vote? Show us the vote. Ten yes, Sue Nance and Beverly Hall vote no, Bob Walden abstaining, Terry Singley is appointed to the FMS committee. We have one more position.
Make a motion, appoint David Atkins to the first.
I'll second him.
We got a motion by Rusty Ory, seconded by Terry Singley, to appoint David Atkins to the FMS committee. Any questions, any discussion? All those in favor of David Atkins being appointed to the FMS committee, vote yes, then press your confirm button. Those opposed, vote no. Anyone wish to change your vote? Show us the vote. Eleven yes, Tom Hatmaker voting no, Bob Walden abstaining, David Atkins and Wendell Bailey David Atkins is appointed to the FMS committee, and that completes the committee.
Is that all, ma'am? Is that all, Mr.?
Mr. Chairman.
Which ones was?
I've got a couple of questions for Jeff.
For what?
Got a couple of questions for Jeff.
Okay.
Johnny Bruce, then Terry-
Tom Hatmaker has a couple of questions for Jeff Marlowe.
Yes, sir.
Jeff, can you confirm the change order cost on the jail to be two, around $266,000?
I'd say it's reasonable, close to $266,000.
I'd say it's reasonable, close, yeah. So I don't know, off the top of my head, it's been, it's been close yet.
No over four million dollars worth changes, additions to the jail.
Correct.
Was there a room set aside for maintenance, courthouse maintenance?
Yes.
That was filled in with rock?
That was filled in with rock?
Yeah.
No?
Have we decided to do something else with that area instead of the maintenance?
Still as proposed as is.
We have made any changes associated with maintenance part of the construction.
Rusty, you have a question?
Change orders was what, Jeff? I know there was addition, Robbie had requested the sheriff.
The largest one was the addition for the sheriff's building.
And he, and he paid the freight from his board bills, right? So it didn't increase the cost of the scope of the project.
That's correct. That's not included in this 266,000?
Yes, it is.
Then how, if he, if he paid for it, how's it come as a change order?
The funding source has nothing to do with the expense. You're an accountant, so you know. You have to have debits and credits on both sides, and the funding source that was part of that budget amendment was increasing board bill and appropriation for the expense of that addition as a change order, and then the change order encompasses it into the contract.
So it, it come out of his funds, but it still costs. But it wasn't out of the scope of the project cost that we set aside. Am I right?
Yeah, I'm not sure exactly where you're going. A change order is an increase in the scope of the work.
Right.
I think what you're trying to say is, but it was paid for by these funds, and that's correct.
It came out of, it did not come out of the funds that were set aside and paid for the jail project.
That's correct.
It was additional funding.
Correct, but it was still...
Now, the other change orders, if, if I may, was the farm marshal had some changes as the rest of them.
And the, the...
And we have no control over the farm marshal's change.
That should go back on contractor for designing, right?
Every project I've seen that has dealt with a school, the first jail down here, there's been change order. I've been having phone calls the last, last three weeks, Tom, that somebody had said a commissioner said was at 25 million dollars on the Justice Center. I called Jeff the next day because my records didn't reflect that, and they're not. It's, we're still at, what, 11, 8, 11, 7?
That's correct.
And not increased.
177.
But we're not at 25 million.
No, we're, we're not even...
I mean, I've had, I've had numerous of calls, people run onto me in the streets, are, is the Justice Center at 25 million? No, sir.
No. It's, it's each enough to 12 million now. It's real close to 12 million now.
There's not a whole lot we can do when the farm marshal walks in and says this. I mean, I don't know of any, any other scope that you can work without the farm marshal stepping in. We did the same thing at Valley View.
I can give you an example of that.
You went through it at Valley?
Fire marshal came in, state approved the plan, sent him back to the school. Fire marshal came in, said, "You're gonna build a $90,000 firewall there," and rebuilt a $90,000 firewall.
And they come back on sidewalks a second.
That wasn't on new construction neither.
It was on new construction.
Do you perceive 4% change is a material deviation?
When I see us spending 250 million dollars, taxpayer dollar, just...
250,000 dollars?
Or 250,000, I'm sorry.
But still, yeah, that's roughly 2% of the original contract.
You say 2%, I say 250,000. Or 250,000.
Okay.
But that's water under the bridge.
But we're not, we're definitely not at 25 million dollars.
No, we're not.
And does, and I do not foresee us being at that, and if we did, it would come back before this body before, and be voted on, am I right, Jeff?
Just like all the other change orders.
Everything else.
One more question. The initial cost of solar panel project?
About, well, you had the first nine, and then the last three, so total, including debt issuance cost, about 1.67 million dollars, something like that, 1.65 million?
Does that include the interest paid back?
Does that include what?
The interest? No. Okay, what second, bump it up to?
Sold for roughly 3.5% if I remember right, three, 3%. 3% excuse.
3% millions, 300,000.
Right, uh, but I'm gonna guess somewhere around 350,000 dollars, maybe 400. But I, I've got the, the final, well, you all got a talk too, the final, um, bond sale. But, yeah, it was, if you remember, it was less than what we estimated originally, because we ended up with 10,000 some few odd dollars for the school board to use on other capital projects.
The, if I can have your all's attention, Johnny, the, the number one danger to firefighters right now, when you involve solar panels, they have to let buildings burn down because they can't put the fire out because they get electrocuted from solar panels.
Could I interrupt you just a second? The, the folks that were here, that are here, that are leaving, the Catching the Land Company folks are gonna have a, another public information meeting at White Oak School next Tuesday, the 26th, 4th, is that the 24th? Yeah. Next Tuesday, the 24th, from 6:00 to 8:00 PM. And Mr. Coakley, at that meeting, they're probably gonna announce a time when anyone that's interested in going and touring the site where the proposed landfill is gonna be, they'll have that site open so you can come and see that. But next Tuesday, 6:00 to 8:00 PM, White Oak Elementary School, another public meeting. Okay.
Animal Advisory Board.
Okay, and also, Animal Advisory Board is tomorrow at 5:30 at Lefollette City Hall.
Yeah, before you, Chairman, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, go ahead, let them ask.
Tommy? Yes, you were saying that a fire could not be fought in a building with solar panels, that you were saying?
If there's one light on inside the school, if it can electrocute, it can back up and electrocute the firemen. I can bring you the article if you'd like to see it.
Sure, I'd love to see it. There's emergency lighting in, in this building. I don't understand the whole concept what he's talking about.
Okay, Marie?
I'm in the short seat. I feel like I'm left out, but I would like to ask you, Coker, anybody that has contact with TDEC, CTAS, whoever, could please have them at our workshop next month.
Let's have a meeting prior to the workshop, and that's my opinion, that we can talk about this for quite a while. I think the workshop didn't have the time, and what we gotta do with it now.
A workshop, you can stay as long as you have to.
If everybody's fine.
Doesn't mean the rest of us can't.
Workshop's fine.
I was on time for that.
That's mine.
Chairman, I, I have no problem whatever, in asking the representatives of TDEC, CTAS, and the ladies attorney, CTAS or TDEC, to come to the meeting if you're statement when they were. I just, I might just say one thing in a quick, just, just about this one thing. Ladies and gentlemen, I don't have any financial interest in this landfill. I think all of you know that being a registered agent doesn't give you any interest in a project. And I have no problems in, in trying to help you get information and connecting you with people who can answer these questions. We don't have anybody out here that has experience with landfills, but these people do. And if y'all decide when you wanna meet, I certainly will try to coordinate that with you.
Okay, is the workshop, next month's workshop, is that a good time for us to have somebody from TDEC, somebody from CTAS, and who else?
At the workshop meeting?
Yes.
What about somebody from Scott County, if they have that already in place, we can ask them?
I have a question. The people we've been talking with on CTAS, they are staff attorneys, you know, they're, they're people that, that have some knowledge about this subject. Jeff Metzger, that you'll see, if you haven't read the emails that I sent today, he is the CTAS attorney who has that expertise. But we'll certainly ask whoever, whoever we can get to come that can answer these questions.
Mayor?
And who?
Can we get somebody, they mentioned that the water quality would get better. And we got somebody that would deal in the water quality people that would know about that, that would know about the water quality getting better?
Can I just explain, since we're just kinda talking?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
If you read everything that's here, and I may be the only bookworm that's read it, I don't know. The way I read it is if we pass the Jackson law and we deny it, then the land company can take us to Chancery Court, that judge does not care what we thought, how we voted. He can overrule it altogether. And if we do that, then you're gonna have a landfill. So I don't want anybody here to think, "I want a landfill," because I don't. But if we pass the Jackson law and it goes to Chancery Court, that judge, one person can grant that permit, is the way I'm reading this, and I've read it over and over and over. So I want more information to secure the vote, so, thank you.
We will get all the folks that, that we can, that we, that are pertinent to this, to be here at the workshop, and we'll be here, we'll stay as long as it takes.
Mr. Chairman, before we get to that, I wanna go back to the Jackson bill just a minute, Jackson law, Jackson law. I, I did, I have not received a copy of that, I've not received the opinions, I have not received any of that, and I wanna study them before, with, Mr. Coker or you?
I'll get you a...
Never mind, never mind. It's in here.
And I'll, I'll get you a copy, okay, I'll get you a copy of the, the information that we got from other people.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman?
Hang on just a second. Jay Muntzey? The workshop is the second Monday in October, which is the 14th of October at 6 o'clock, 6:00 PM. And, uh, let's see, just a note, the free flu vaccine, we had it here, let's see. Had it here this past Thursday in the commissioner's workshop, um, what is today? Today's the 16th, Saturday, September the 21st, 8:00 to 12:00 noon at Lefollette Medical Center. Friday, September the 27th, 10:00 to 2:00 PM at the Lefollette Medical Center. And Saturday, October the 12th, 8:00 to 12:00 noon at Lefollette Medical Center. And also, second annual golf tournament and fundraiser to educate children in school to resist drugs and violence, the DARE program. It's Wednesday, October the 23rd, 2013, at the, the Greens at Deerfield. 1:00 PM shotgun start, $300 per team, prizes for the longest drive and closest to the hole. You can contact the sheriff's office or the Greens at Deerfield at 566-0040, or email Whole sponsors are available for $50 each.
Just so that we're all in the loop on something, we, we nearly forgot to discuss this, uh, the vending machines?
Yes.
I asked you to call me when you had a meeting with Don Dilback. You said you didn't have the meeting, but Don come over here?
He, he didn't come to see me.
Right, he came and signed a contract.
Hmm, signed a contract for what?
Didn't you say he had a contract that was good through the 31st December now?
No. He has, the original agreement that he has is still in effect, and he said that he would relinquish his agreement the end December 31st. And I told you that he had a, an agreement with Tennessee Business Enterprise, and he'll get me a, a copy of that.
My question is, is he's breached that contract? It's been over, what, a year since he's put anything in the machines out here? You been doing it?
No, it's not been a year.
How long has it been?
Uh...
Nine months, 10 months? It's, it's been a while, hasn't it?
It's been less than a year.
Well, a little less than a year. That's one month's too long. If he's not interested in doing it, then why all of a sudden does he wanna do it?
Does the contract say that he has to do it?
Who wrote the contract?
I done a long time before I was here.
Well...
But he has agreed to relinquish the agreement December 31st.
You can give him 30 days' notice, and that contract's void. Actually, at this point, you wouldn't have to give him 30 days, because he's breached the, the contract by not attending to the machines. We need, is that correct, Joe?
If he's not performing, I, I would assume that you could terminate him.
The machines have been half-full for a year now. We got the opportunity to put somebody that, whether it's the person that was, has been brought up in the past or somebody else, why do we hire somebody that just half-does jobs? When we got the opportunity to hire somebody that can bring the old machines in, go buy the pops cheaper, maybe even sell them to the public cheaper, and do it right? Instead of having to pick between two or three drinks, or eight or nine chips, when the whole machines could be full? If we're gonna do this, let's do it right, quit doing stuff half-assed.
Yes.
I think Johnny Bruce has asked for a moment of silence.
That's correct. Everybody stand and observe a moment of silence for Suzanne Sharp. She was a third, I think she was a third or fourth grade teacher at Jacksboro Elementary, passed away today. She's had terminal kidney, or kidney cancer, yes. Amen. Thank you all. Got a motion by Terry Singley to the chair.